Okay, we're on, right? Okay. Let's call to order the meeting. This is the regular city council meeting. The date is April 1st, 2019. And our first order of business is to stand for the part two nations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I'd like to welcome everybody here and anybody else that's going to be watching in the future on YouTube. I will start with introductions. My name is Pam Lordensen and I am acting mayor. Lisa Whalen, Mayor Lisa Whalen was unable to attend tonight. So to my left, city council members, Mike Multer, John Temperlin, Shannon Bruce. Our city engineer with WSB is Allison Foskey. City clerk is Chris Lindquist. And director of administration is Cassandra Tabor. And to my right, I have city administrator, Mike Barone. Director of finances is Brian Grimm. Director of community development is Brian, or David Abel. And our attorney, Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And our chief of police, Paul Falls. All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. And is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with a count of four zero. We do have a special presentation this evening, Minutrista Public Safety Annual Report. And we are going to hand that out to Paul Falls, our chief of police.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did put a copy of this, the printed version of this 2018 annual report at your workstations there. The PowerPoint is similar. And so this is just, I guess, intended to be a summary. So I'm not going to go into great detail. Certainly if you have questions as I'm going through this, feel free to ask. I'd rather address it as we're going rather than wait to the end. And if you have questions at the end, that's fine too. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to go through each slide. I'll be fairly brief. But again, a lot of this is for the viewers online as well. So I want to make sure that I do cover each of the slides. So with that, I'll just start with our mission. Our mission is very simple, which is one thing that I think is important, at least to me, because a lot of times you see organizations that have a mission statement that's so long and complicated, even sometimes their employees don't understand it. So to me, simple is important. Everyone needs to understand it. And ours is simply to fight crime and promote safety, which certainly encompasses everything that we do in public safety. So we'll move along to the meat and potatoes of the annual report, which is really a kind of a document to gather statistical data to let us know how busy we are and compare one year to the next and pick up on trends and things like that. As you know, we're a growing community and we have been for some time. And hopefully that will continue. And all indications are that it will. And as we would suspect, with that comes more activity, more police-related activity, if you will. So in 2018, our ICRs increased 1.9%. That's not a huge amount, but we've seen a steady increase the last couple of years. And I suspect we'll continue to see that as we move forward. So there were 6,379 incident, or ICRs, in 2018, which averages out to over 17 incidents per day, which is a lot of activity in a community our size. So that's certainly keeping staff very, very busy. That's an average. Some days are busier than others, as you know. Tickets issued. I guess I'll touch on this quickly. Our tickets decreased just slightly in 2018 over 2017. There's a number of reasons for that. Typically when you see activity increase, you tend to see tickets decrease because most of the ticket activity is the result of proactive enforcement. So with that, if you're busy or taking calls and dealing with calls, you have less time to go out and be proactive. And so you tend to see the tickets go down a little bit. So with that, the numbers are still strong and still in the same ballpark. And then that number of tickets, the total, 2687, averages out to over seven tickets a day. Again, not every day, but some days more, some days less. But again, that's a lot of activity on top of all the calls. Traffic crashes, I'll spend a little bit of time here because this is an important issue for us. Certainly we would like to see zeros in all these categories. That's our goal. That's not necessarily achievable, but we do the best we can. And one of the reasons that we make so many traffic stops and we're being highly visible out there is because there's a direct correlation between traffic enforcement and reducing your crash rates. And so with the time that we have left after taking calls for service, we encourage officers to go out and be highly visible and enforce the traffic laws. And this is exactly why we do that, to keep these traffic crash rates as low as we possibly can. I'm happy to report that in 2018, we did not have any fatal crashes. In 2017, we did. So that's good. So the total crashes are up just slightly from 2017, 1.6%. That's not a lot, but they are up just slightly. So we definitely want to keep a close eye on this. And I broke it out, personal injury crashes, obviously are injury crashes. Some of those are minor injuries. Some of those are pretty severe injuries. We didn't break it out any further than that for this presentation. You'll see 31 animal-involved crashes. That's, we like to track that because out here, we get a lot of that kind of thing. It's not just deer, coyote, raccoons, or whatever. So that's a pretty significant number. And again, that's something that, just given our geographical area, we deal with on a routine basis. Property damage, you can see 92. And then 47 vehicles off the road. This last winter was a pretty brutal winter. So that number's probably a lot higher than it hasn't been in the past. So with that, I'll move on. Arrests. You can see overall, the arrests are down just slightly from 2017 to 2018. With one caveat, the number of adult arrests actually rose a little bit and the juvenile arrests went down a little bit. So that's just how it broke out for 2018. But still, even though it decreased, it's pretty slight. 148, 155 to 148. So, and then again, I'll just point out that arrests don't necessarily mean each and every one of those people was taken into physical custody. There were a good number of those that were, but sometimes they're charged and it's considered an arrestable offense, so that counts as well. Civil fingerprints is something that we do a lot of. The reason I track this is because this takes a lot of staff time and it is a service to the communities that we serve. So we get a lot of residents that come in for, whether they're going through an adoption process or a job that requires fingerprinting, they'll come in and set up an appointment to be fingerprinted. And our staff does that for them. That's, I think, a good service to provide to the community. We have the equipment anyway. And so we did 42 of those in 2018. And I think we'll continue to see that number rise because more and more jobs are starting to require criminal background checks. And so as a result of that, we tend to see this number increase. Criminal investigations. This number is down a bit from 2017. You'll see that there were 104 Part I crimes. Part I crimes are the most serious things, like criminal sexual conduct, burglary, assault, those types of crimes. Part II crimes are thefts, petty thefts, things like that. So for 2018, we had a total of 417 investigations. That's a lot of activity. Regardless of the fact that it's down a bit from 2017, that's good. However, that is still a lot of activity. Many of these investigations take not just, it's not a single time, a single visit where you are able to clear a case up. It might take hours, it might take days, it might take weeks in some cases, depending on the severity of the crime and the amount of follow-up and the amount of people involved in the crime and so on and so forth. So a lot of these were very complex cases, especially the Part I crimes. Many of those take weeks to resolve. So with that, our clearance rate is at 73%, which I just want to point out that I think staff does a really good job of balancing the need to clear cases and come to a successful conclusion based on how much time they have. Because the state average is only about 50%, which is well below the 73. And Hennepin County is not, I'm not referring to the county itself, but all of the cities in Hennepin County averaged together, the clearance rate is about 41%. So we're quite a bit higher than that. And there's a number of factors. Certainly the busier the agency and the more crimes they have to investigate, that number tends to fall off because they just can't keep up. And so things that might be relatively minor, they might not spend much time on. And so you tend to see those numbers fall off just because of the sheer volume of investigations. Let me go back to make one more comment on that. And then as part of this criminal investigations, that does not include, has, none of the drug task force information is included in that. So that's just separate investigations, not drug task force related. The drug task force in 2018 had one of its busiest years ever. So we're definitely seeing everything trending up. There's a lot of talk about opioids and all the issues associated with that. And that's still significant. However, there's a lot of other issues with other drugs as well that are just as significant, if not even more so. You tend to see, these drugs will fluctuate in popularity and availability depending on where the pressure is. And opioid, opioids, there's a lot of pressure and attention given to that right now, which is good. It's helping. It's still an epidemic. It's still a problem. But that means that there's other drugs that are becoming more of an issue than they were in the past. So it just kind of bounces back and forth between the different drugs depending on how much attention and enforcement is directed specifically at those items. So in 2018, the drug task force, and when I say drug task force, I'm just talking about our drug task force, which is a small task force. They served 131 search warrants. They made 104 arrests. They had 110 state and federal charges. And then the numbers, I'll go through them real quickly. High-grade marijuana, 85 pounds. Marijuana wax, 11 pounds. Edibles, you're starting to see an increase in those, 21 pounds. Cocaine, you can see is probably the lowest amount, 1.2 pounds. That's still, for cocaine, that's a lot of cocaine. Methamphetamines, 70 pounds. I mean, these are alarming numbers when I see these numbers. Heroin C's, 69 grams. And firearms, C's, 65. So that's a very significant number. We don't like to, obviously, we don't like to see firearms in the hands of our dope dealers. That's a bad combination. And so I'm happy to report that there's 65 less firearms in the hands of those people. And I think 2019 is starting out to be a year on pace or very close to the same pace. And so we'll certainly keep you posted as we continue to...
Paul?
Yes?
Do you have any thoughts about what our numbers are going to look like in light of the Hennepin County Attorney's decision not to prosecute some low-level marijuana crimes?
Yes, that, we've discussed that just briefly. And basically, there's so many of these cases that that's essentially a way of trying to weed out where are you putting your resources and your assets. And so by not dealing with the low, lower amounts, kind of setting a threshold, if you will, so that they have time and resources to deal with the larger cases. We don't know how that's going to shake out just yet. We'll certainly continue to do business as we have and forward those cases. And then we'll provide feedback when we start to see what the trickle-down effect of that is. At this point, we really haven't seen much for changes there.
Okay, thanks.
But good question. SWAT team, not a lot to say here. You know that we're a part of this multi-jurisdictional SWAT team, much like the task force, many of the same agencies. Last year in 2018, we had four SWAT team call-outs. So that's kind of a full call-out, the whole team. And then in addition to that, there's a lot of low-level, they're not really considered call-outs, but when you do a drug task force search warrant or any search warrant for that matter, if you feel there's some level of risk beyond the normal search warrant, then we might just use a few SWAT team members to help assist with that. And then a lot of things just don't get to the point of a full call-out because a lot of these officers are SWAT team members are already working. So they're able to resolve this on a smaller scale without calling out the whole team. So this is still a huge asset to us. Not to mention, it provides each of our agencies have officers on this team that are, that get additional training and they're able to bring that back to our agencies. And then just apply that on kind of a, on an agency need basis. So the SWAT team is, it's a, I guess it's an organization that on paper doesn't look like it gets a lot of use, but really it does. The full-scale call-outs are relatively low, but overall, they assist us a lot more than Permits, let's see, what can I say about this? Handgun permits, this is something we've done for years. If you get a permit to carry, that's something that has changed in a number of years ago. So a permit to carry a firearm is done through the sheriff's office at the county level. The permits that we do are permit to purchase. Those are the only permits we do related to firearms. So in 2017, or 18, rather, we had 78 applications. This is down a bit from the year before. This number tends to fluctuate with essentially the attention given to gun control. If there's a lot of talk about new gun control legislation, you tend to see these numbers go up quite a bit. And when that relaxes, those numbers come back down. So we've kind of seen this number come down as a result of that. And then special events is, you know, we have our annual events. There's a handful of those that recur every single year. And then some of them are one-time events. So in 2017, we had 10. In 2018, we only had seven. So this year, I'm not sure how that'll come out yet. We have a couple starting to come in for the summer months, but we'll see how that goes. Commendations. So each year, we give out a number of commendations. There's different levels of commendations. I won't go into too much detail here unless anyone has questions. But award of excellence is kind of one of the higher-level awards and it's for something that rises kind of above and beyond. So you can see, we had three awards, award of excellence this year in 2018. We had five commendation awards. And then we had one meritorious service award. Meritorious service award is for, in most cases, is for an officer that takes on an additional assignment. And then at the completion of that assignment, when they turn it over to someone else, they receive a meritorious service award for their extra effort in that assignment. So that's the case there. And then reserve officers. I'll just touch on this briefly. We only have a handful of reserve officers. They are volunteers. They do get training. And they do a number of things for us, as you can see by the list there. Probably some of the most important are prisoner transports because it doesn't tie an officer up. I don't have to send a licensed officer out of the city all the way to Minneapolis or to Detox or to wherever. I can send a volunteer with the prisoner, a cooperative prisoner, of course. So it just keeps our paid staff in the city to continue to answer calls for service. Business checks, house checks. And then they do a lot of assists by riding along with an officer. So they're very helpful that way and they're free. So it's nice that we have a number, some of them are residents, some of them are not, but they're all willing to donate their time to the city for the greater cause and we really appreciate their time and effort. With that said, we are looking to add reserve officers or volunteers. This is kind of an issue, you're seeing this a lot in the fire departments, where we're having a harder and harder time finding volunteers that want to spend time just because people are so busy these days. But we are always looking for good volunteers to join our reserves. And that concludes the presentation unless you have any questions.
How do you try to recruit volunteers?
That's a good question. What we do is we typically work with other agencies. Sometimes you get reserves that are, that live closer to this area and they don't want to travel as far. Or we work with Crown College, for example, has a criminal justice program. So we try to see if there's any students that are interested. Oftentimes, they are busy, so they don't want to commit unless they know that they can put in the time. We do the same thing through Normandale College, has a criminal justice program, and then just word of mouth. But it's definitely gotten a lot harder to find volunteers over the years. You know, years ago, we had a dozen or more and now we're down to just a few. But we're always looking, so we'll keep, keep working at it. Any other questions? Otherwise, all the data that was in this PowerPoint is in the handout that I gave to you. So certainly if you have any questions at later date, let me know. Otherwise, that's, that's all I have.
Well, thanks, Paul. I do refer back to these reports occasionally. So they are really good to have. So I appreciate it.
Good. We'll post that on the website as well, under public safety. So it's not there now, but it will be shortly.
Okay. Great. And we did not have any persons to be heard. So we will move right into our consent agenda. Looking for the approval of the consent agenda. Letter A, approve the work session meeting minutes for March 18th, 2019. B, approve the regular meeting minutes for March 18th, 2019. And C, resolution number 43-19, approve the claims. Are there any points that would like to be removed or discussed?
I'd like to take off B and C.
So can we make a motion to approve the letter A, approve work session meeting minutes for March 18th, 2019?
So moved.
Wait a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Okay. Shannon with the regular meeting minutes.
Yep. On the packet, page six, at the bottom of the page where we were talking about to approve the plans and specifications and authorized bids, I was a dissenting vote on that. And when I look back at the minutes, it didn't have, usually when you have a dissenting vote, you can look at the minutes and sort of see why there was a dissenting vote. And there wasn't any, anything in the minutes to indicate why there was a dissenting vote. So I'd just like the minutes to reflect that I raised a concern about the plans and specifications that were, it was a 176-page document written by WSB that hadn't been reviewed by a qualified impartial party. And that was my concern. So I'd just like that reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Is that something that, Chris, you just redo and we need to bring back tonight or we just bring back next?
Yes, to the council.
Counsel?
I would suggest we give Chris the opportunity, the chance to probably review the...
That's fine.
... and bring it back so that we can make sure we have it reflected as intended.
Okay. Anything else under letter B?
And then do you want to do the...
Approve the claims?
Yep, the claims. And some of these questions were, are just for my education. On page 11, under Clifton Larson Allen, there was a $15,000 expense. And I was just wondering, I've never seen that name auditing and accounting progress billing audit. What was, I'm just curious what that was for.
Yeah. Councilmember Bruce and Madam Mayor and Counsel, this is just, yeah, they're our contracted certified, or CPA or whatever, that's doing our year-end audit. So we have a contract with them. I think we're in the third year of a three-year contract. And this is 15,000. I think we're, our contract with them for this year is just under 25,000. So this is, they did the majority of the work here in early March. They were out for field work and stuff. So that's where that bill comes into play.
Okay. I thought we used LRS, but it...
LRS is our financial advisor. They more help with debt issuances and those type of things.
But not auditing?
No. Auditing's Clifton Larson.
Okay. And then we talked at our last meeting about the cable fund. And I noticed the charge for, on page 12, for Isaac Leaf Professional Services at $520. Should that be coming out of that cable fund? Because that's for recording the video of our meetings. And I was just, and I know we mentioned it when we talked.
Yeah. We could, I mean, I think that's probably a possibility. I know we've more looked at the cable fund expenses for more capital expenditures and for, and that, and we've used the general fund for more paying us the operations of more taping and putting it out there. I mean, I know the cable fund's not as restrictive as like park dedication or something like that where it has to be like, you know, capital, you can't, you know, spend it on maintenance and stuff. This, I guess we probably could take a little closer look at it.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that. We could probably take a second look at it.
If we want.
See what's justified.
Yeah, because I would have no problem with, yeah, coding it to the cable.
I'd just, I'd like to use that fund, if we can, for expenses that are video-related because I think that's what the fund is for.
Sure.
And that was all.
Okay. Do we need to go back now and approve with that, the approval of the claims now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we will go back to resolution number 43-19, approve the claims as it is posted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We have no public hearings tonight, so we're moving right into our business items. We only have one on the plans for tonight, which is resolution number 44-19, approve the purchase agreement for two acres of land off of the property at 9400 State Highway North 7. And I think, this is you, Mike.
Well, I will just introduce David and Mr. Beatty. And I may chime in as I see fit. So we'll start with David.
I think, thank you, Mike, counsel. As the council will recall, we've been negotiating with the property owners at 9400 State Highway 7, as just mentioned. The council went into a closed session on February 19th of 2019 to discuss the potential purchase of land. We followed the Minnesota State Statute 13D05 to do so. And as you'll recall from that discussion, we talked about breaking off two acres of land off of that larger piece at 9400 in order to pursue the possibilities of putting a water storage facility on there and potential other water utilities someday in the future. Per direction at that closed session, staff went back and has been negotiating with the property owner, Mr. Beatty, and has helped us in drafting a purchase agreement. We do have a signed purchase agreement from the property owner. So they have agreed to the terms as written in the purchase agreement. As you council members may recall from previous purchase agreements, this is very similar in a standard purchase agreement with the terms that we see and use when we pursue things like this. Some of that, of course, was new to the property owners, so it took them some time to walk through that, understand what some of that meant. But we did get them to agree to go ahead and sign the purchase agreement. So what we're looking for from council this evening is for you then to go ahead and authorize the mayor and clerk to approve the purchase agreement as outlined in your packet here this evening with the terms as written. The terms of the agreement allow us the right to investigate the property further to ensure that it is suitable for our needs. We'll be doing soil testing, survey work, trying to, that survey work will also have engineering, will make sure that all of it will fit on the site adequately. So we do have some time to go ahead and do our investigation to do, make sure that it will satisfy what we're looking to use it for. Should all of that come out okay, we've got a June closing. We can certainly close earlier if we come to the conclusion that this is the right site and it will work for our needs. The property owners are open to that and would love that if we could close earlier as well. So we'll do what we can to try to move forward with the due diligence if the council's okay with the purchase agreement this evening. As stated, per the closed session, the price has not changed. The two acres, looking at $100,000 for the purchase price. The property owners are still okay with that dollar amount. And then again, as mentioned, the closed, the closed session, that we'd be handling any closing-type costs and those types of things ourselves. And the property owners requested that as well, that we take care of those sorts of things. So that's really all I have to add this evening. Certainly let Mike or Ron add anything else as they wish. Can stand for questions. But again, just looking to approve the resolution that would authorize the mayor and clerk to sign that purchase agreement.
I have a question about on page 19, number two... I have a question about, on page 19, number two, it says that we don't have a legal description of the property yet. What is, what's involved in getting that?
So that's part of the survey work that would have to be completed.
So it's just waiting on a survey?
Yeah. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to have a land surveyor go out and actually stake it and produce a legal description for the site. Yep.
Okay.
So would that be the first step if this is approved?
No. No. I mean, we don't want to get the cart too far ahead of the horse. Probably a soil boring testing would be the first step.
Okay.
We don't want to spend money that we don't need to. That could come potentially last to make sure that, you know, we can do what we need to do on the site.
So you don't need a legal description to go out onto the land to say, I know I'm within my parameters here?
No. No. I mean, they'll generally know what we're dealing with. The soil testing, I mean, with the, as you'll see the aerial photo, that's an exhibit to it. I mean, we can get close enough to do what we need to do to figure out if it's going to work or not.
Okay. So, and if we close on the end of June, how soon would we be looking at maybe starting to work on this?
Well, it's largely up to you, the council, in, you know, how fast do you want to move? I mean, a lot of the answers in the timing, what our plan is if the council approves this tonight is we'd have SEH here at your next council meeting, hopefully with a proposal to do some of this work, to do the soil testing, to do the survey, survey work, to come up with a legal, all of those sorts of things, to get the ball rolling on the due diligence. But, you know, again, it's up to you, how fast do you want to move? Plans and specs would need to be ordered and all of that.
Okay. Do they work on this throughout the year? I mean, is this something you really only do in three seasons of the year?
No. Ideally, you're going to do foundation work during the summer months. But once you get the foundation work done, they can work year-round above ground.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, we're ready to take a motion to approve the resolution number 44-19 as talked about, to approve the purchase agreement for the two acres of land off of the property of 9400 State Highway North 7. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion passes four to zero.
And Mayor and Counsel, as David mentioned, we're lining up the folks from SEH to come back with a proposal.
That's good, too. Take five.
So that was a nice interruption. But nonetheless, we're going to have SEH here at our next meeting. They'll hopefully bring back a scope of services for some of the other work. It'll be kind of, as David mentioned, parsed in order. So we'll do the soil testings. If some reason the soil testings were terrible, we'd stop and we wouldn't do some of the other work. But the thinking is, if this was in the, if you remember the color-coded map that SEH produced a number of months, years ago, that it, this was kind of in the high area. So we really don't know that it's going to be bad. But our guess is it's going to be just fine. So, but we'll have a better game plan on some of that stuff and timing as we get to the next meeting.
I, excuse me, I did have a question about, after the fact, that the planning commission reviews, it says the planning commission is expected to review the acquisition or report back to council. What do they do after we've already approved the purchase? What is...
Well, you approved a purchase agreement with due diligence. It has to be done to make sure that we're going to close, actually close on the property. One of those is to, for the planning commission as the local planning agency to declare whether the purchase from a public agency is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So what is this property going to be used for?
Okay.
And so at the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting, we will bring that before the planning commission. Our recommendation is, is this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. A public utility is allowed in all of our zoning districts in Minnetrista. So it is a compatible use per what the property is zoned. So that's forthcoming at the April meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
As David said, it's a contingency in the agreement. It's a statutory requirement. Frankly, it's really intended for purchases from other governmental entities, county, school district, or others that may not be knowledgeable about the city's comprehensive plan. Although the way the statute reads, it applies to everybody. I think it's kind of not necessary because we ought to know what our own comprehensive plan says. However, we're just complying with the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then we move right into staff reports. And we'll start with you, Mike.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. So I'm going to start this, but we may get to the council report from Mr. Molitor to talk about the LMCD issue. I think you all received an email late last week, early today. I think it was late last week, or over the weekend, actually, about the LMCD. I know they did have a meeting and Mr. Molitor called me on Friday. And so I'm going to let him kind of give that. But there was a bit of an upheaval about the, some pending legislation in St. Paul. And so we can, when we get to your point of the meeting to talk, if you don't mind. Sure. Okay. Yeah. Since you go to all the meetings and I don't. So also, I'm in the process of setting up one-on-one meetings with council members for the city administrator performance review. Shannon, if you wouldn't mind, I know we didn't connect today, but if you want to give me a call tomorrow, we can set up our meeting here in the next week or so.
Sure.
That'd be great. And then I think everybody probably got the email today from Nancy Rigglehoff. And she lives out on Enchanted, I believe. And she was concerned about it. So I forwarded that email that I received from one of our council members to Allison Fausky and asked her to reply. And I know she's done that already. I think our council members would like to see that. So if you wouldn't mind forwarding it to them, they would see your responses. But I was going to let her explain her answers as she did in this email to Nancy Rigglehoff, to you folks here on the council, so you can hear what it is that her concerns were and what the issues are, answers for those. So.
Thank you. So to generalize, the resident's concern is with the quality of the work on the shoulder of the project. So the roads were paved late last year and the resident had some complaints and concerns with regards to the seeding, that nothing's taken, nothing's grown up there. So the time of year that the project, that valley paving was out there to do the paving, they were not able to get in with restoration to spread the black dirt and seeding. So that work will be coming through this spring yet. They are not able to currently go out there and do that because there are road restrictions out there. So they're not able to do that. So we'll get that programmed in. Another concern was with the, with the guard rail, the location where that started and stopped. That was, those locations were based on the side slope to the road. So where that slope exceeded 33% or three to one, that's where the guard rail went in. It wasn't looking at that horizontal alignment or where a curve was in the road. And the other concern expressed in the email was with regards to the project schedule. And again, we were in that unfortunate circumstance where the council had an issue with their force main, which delayed the street project. So I will certainly forward my response to the resident, to the council, so that you can see what I've explained to the resident. And I also offered to meet her out on site if she wanted to go over anything. Just, it's been a long time.
Something to do with logs or whatever those are called?
Oh, thank you. Siltation logs or bio-rills. So when a project's, with a project such as this, there are erosion incentive control devices put up, silt fence, bio-rills, that sort of thing. And those are to remain out on the site until a certain amount of the vegetation has been established. So that's for permitting requirements. So those will have to stay out there. We'll likely be doing some work out there to reestablish the location, some of those, to make sure that we're keeping things cleaned up. So, thank you.
Okay, Allison, when you get done meeting with her, can you give us some more information? Just a follow-up to your conversation with her?
Sure.
And Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? No one? How about you, Shannon?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? John?
Had Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting on the 21st. And some's discussion, again, on Hennepin County's change and focus are really going back to what their true intent has always been and should have been as an advisor to the commission. And yet they've been a more hands-on. Now with Jim retiring, they are going to step back. So out of that, we've asked Pioneer Sarah Creek to come back with the total hours that were worked last year by Hennepin County. And then, and what that work was, kind of categorize it so we can probably, as a commission, get our hands around if we deal with a public engineering for what the change in cost is going to be. Because it'll affect our budget. And that will come back at our next meeting. Also, this Friday, Chair, Vice Chair, and Treasurer will be meeting, starting work on preliminary budget work. So that's going on already.
Yeah, I think I read that. I can still get their meeting notes.
Oh, okay. That was it.
Yeah. Okay, Mike, you're on.
Sure. So as we all know, we received an email from the city administrator of Orno who had passed along a letter or memo from the mayor. I think the gist of the email was calling into the question the authority of the executive director to make a position on a proposed legislative matter that directly impacts the LMCD. And we discussed it at our last meeting. And legal counsel was quite clear and pointed to several cases where, or several cases within the statute that allows the administrative director to make those type of statements and positions. So to, so I think from a legal perspective, there doesn't seem to be any type of an issue. The board went further to pass a resolution in support of the executive director that passed unanimously regarding the actions that she took and felt that those actions were appropriate. So that's where the board stands on that issue. And there didn't seem to be any legal concerns with that. So.
And what was the legislative issue that it was about?
Yeah. That's a good question. The legislative issue was that both OSMIC and Heritage, that's pronunciation.
Portas.
Heritage, thank you, had introduced companion bills to limit the authority of the LMCD to regulate dry dock storage, which means storing your boat on a rack, if you will, for commercial marinas. There are four, I believe approximately four, commercial marinas on the lake that do that. And they introduced that legislation without any, obviously it's direct, it's specifically directed at the LMCD because the LMCD was created by the legislature in 1967. So it's specifically directed to the LMCD. There was no prior discussion with the LMCD about this measure and why it was brought about. Certainly can speculate, but we won't do that here. But there was no prior discussion. And so the first I had heard of it and any of the board had heard of it was this response that our executive director poured out there in opposition to this. Because it, what the dry dock storage marinas do has a direct impact on the lake. I mean, it doesn't take much to figure that out, right? And so she wrote a letter stating that the LMCD is opposed to this measure because it directly influences the ability to regulate the lake. And given that the hearing on this was, let's see, a week ago Friday, and our next, our subsequent board meeting wasn't until the following Wednesday, she wasn't, we weren't able to convene a meeting. She did consult with the officers and three, I believe, three out of the officers actually went to the legislature, legislature testified at the public hearing in opposition to this bill. And so the bills, you know, as we know, like, go through a number of legislative committees and hearings and so forth. And they're still moving through that process. But that's what the issue was, was to reduce, limit the ability for the LMCD to regulate dry dock storage.
And how does, what did they want to do with dry dock storage? What was the regulation?
What they wanted to do was to remove the LMCD from the ability to regulate it. The alternative, although not in the legislation, but presumed to be the alternative, would be that the city that the marina is located in would regulate that storage.
Okay. So the city wanted to regulate it?
Right. Versus, versus the LMCD. So.
Okay. Okay. That's, I understand.
Yeah. So that was the issue. So that's...
Okay. And just the only other comment I would make is generally, whether you agree or disagree with the legislation, the, kind of the right thing to do is to let the legislative body, LMCD in this case, know that you're introducing a bill that's kind of against what they're chartered to do. And that really wasn't done, which was, again, what Mike mentioned, they didn't hear about it until too late. So I thought that wasn't very nice to do. I mean, you should probably say, hey, we have a disagreement on this, but we're introducing this. So just so you know.
Right. And I should add on to that. Thanks for bringing that up, Mike. We, I know our executive director is reaching out to Mayor of Orno and those others that have a concern about this to find out what the true concern is.
Right.
And see if we can address it.
Right.
If there's some onerous regulation that is not, is prohibiting something, we want to find out and see if we can work out a solution.
Sure.
So that's kind of going on simultaneously.
Good. Good to hear.
So we're trying to be as proactive as possible.
Good.
Okay. And I just have WCC meeting. There is not a date yet posted, but I'm sure I'll get it this week. Pig races are running as planned. And West Tonka, Kevin Borg did approve for the name the pig team contest to be sent to the elementary and middle schools. And Wakonia Pat Divine is still, he hasn't got back to me yet, but I think they might have been on spring break last week. So that information will go to Lake Town Elementary because that's where the majority of the Minnetrista students go, is Lake Town Elementary. Other than that, everything's going great. We've got prizes, sponsorship is doing great, and we're ready to roll. So I think that's it. So can we adjourn?
Tell me if you make a motion or approve.
All right. Can we make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes four to zero.